Everyone, it's 7:00 AM. Wednesday, May 29th, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is a discussion about an encroachment agreement, and I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Guevara. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, members. Before you is a request letter from Speedy Delivery. If you refer to the map here, this is their facility site. What Speedy Delivery has been evaluating additional parking needs for their facility located at 912 Wyburns Road. In general, they believe at this time, a minor expansion to the south of their existing lot, primarily shown in the area shaded in yellow on the screen there, would help with their needs. Because of this, we re-own the property that they'd be encroaching on, so instances if approved like this are handled through an encroachment agreement. We've been reviewing this for some time. I believe it's adequate to proceed with this. I've attached a letter from the representatives along with some of their parking lot improvements, as shown. This is all approximate, but at this time, if the council desires and everything, you would direct myself and a city attorney to prepare an encroachment agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and Speedy Delivery Services. All fees such as this are paid and borne by the petitioner requesting this work, which would be Speedy.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions?
The council?
Is there a motion to bring this forward to the council?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both say and sign that motion, carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next item on the agenda is outdoor wood burners. I'll call on Public Works Director Guy Taylor. Morning, Guy.
Morning, Your Honor. Thank you. Good morning, members. We had an open forum request to look at the ordinance as it relates to outdoor fire boilers, 6.821 in the city code. Just some highlights of the code. It was put into effect in April of '09. His appliance actually went into, it was installed in sometime between 2012 and 2013. One provision of the code states that the chimney needs to be at least 15 feet above grade, or at least the height of the chimney of all buildings within 300 feet. So he doesn't meet the criteria with either of those two points, the 15 feet or the roof line of the 300, buildings within 300 feet. The other part of this is not allowed in the I-3 zone. I talked with Gordon Hidukovich, and he said that they purposely drafted the ordinance that way so that the smoke drift wouldn't hit up against typically taller buildings that are going to be in an industrial park zone and just be trapped within buildings. So they made that requirement in the code to get the smoke up and into the air and move it out. So you can see, this is 2018, the little square, white square there, that's the boiler. If you go back to 2012, 13 is there, 12, it's not. So it wasn't a permitted installation, it just happened sometime in that 2012, 2013 timeframe. And so it's been in, you know, in place all these years, seven plus, and we've had two complaints in those years. So. Open it up for your questions and discussions.
Just one question on the complaints. Was it just due to the smoke? And if so, by following the code of getting it up over 15 feet, would that, in theory, is that going to help with the complaints, or was the complaint something completely different?
It definitely would help. There's no way he can get it up to the roof line of the buildings within 300 feet. It's just not practical.
Right. Is that what the complaint was, was smoke?
Yeah, really black acrid smoke, yeah.
So if we were to change the ordinance, would it be the, would it be the distance? Would it be the height? Would it be, how would?
Yeah, it'd be a combination of three things. The zone, allowing it in that zone.
Industrial zone.
Yeah, reducing the height or the distance to buildings within 300 feet, reducing that distance.
And so are there, sorry, do we run the risk of, you know, the height, the smoke isn't drifting up against other buildings in this particular instance, is it?
It wasn't drifting up and staying there, but it was blowing into them and, yeah, getting into their buildings when their doors would open. So you can see to the south is the Humane Society Building, to the west is Otter Tail Telecom Shop Building, and they're both within just a little over 200 feet.
Tom?
So they, they built this when, I mean, it wasn't permitted. They built it, and now they're asking us to change the ordinance?
Yes.
That's great. And you said it wasn't practical for them to get the chimney up high enough?
Correct.
Why is that?
Well, the Otter Tail Telecom Building, for one, it's up on a hill.
Oh, okay.
So with that, plus the height of their building, the chimney off of that little outdoor boiler would be up 50, 60 feet in the air, something ridiculous, maybe 40.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would say I'm hesitant to change ordinances because people did something they shouldn't have done in the first place. I don't want to set that precedent, really. But what do you guys think?
Well, I just kind of add something. Well, he gave it for us, the council. It was my understanding of that, he had said that the previous building, he felt like he had approval, but he didn't go through a permitting process. I don't, I don't know if, I don't think he just built it, and I think he was in conversation with somebody at the city who's no longer here.
Oh, okay. So he thought there was kind of like?
I think he thought he was in compliance because he had talked to the city, is my understanding, so I think, yeah.
Now, as far as the height of the chimney is concerned, I mean, the problem I got, I can understand getting it up there because, I mean, I've had a boiler before, you know, and I understand getting it up so high. But, I mean, what do you do? I mean, you're telling me because his building's way over here, or so tall, he'd have to have this thing just way high, and it's like, well, what do you do when this guy has a boiler and now all of a sudden somebody wants to build a building over here, and now all of a sudden you're going to turn around and say, well, you got to raise your chimney now? I mean, 15 feet, I believe, is acceptable, you know, because, I mean, I've had them. If you get a good draw on that thing, that thing's going to go up. But, you know, that's, I think, it's a little bit asking too much as far as the height of the chimney is concerned.
Yeah, I was hoping Rolf would be here, he would have some recollection of that too, but that's what Gordon recalled, was that they put that requirement in there just to get it up and over those typically taller buildings.
He meets the 15 feet requirement? Do you know, Jason?
No. He's only like this far out of his tap. He'd have to put it up with guide wires, so.
Okay. So he would, he would have to put a 15-foot chimney on there?
Yeah.
So if we change the ordinance, as I think as Brent's suggesting, to say 15 feet but not meet the requirement of the other buildings within 300 feet, is that?
And to allow it in the I-3 zone, or just grandfather this one, give him the allowance or a variance? I don't know if a variance is applicable here, but maybe not change the ordinance for the allowance of it.
That's what I, that's what my question was. If we open up the I-3 zone for that and change that ordinance, does that create a lot more problems probably down the road with things like this and buildings within 300 feet and that kind of thing, rather than just maybe grandfathering them in, like you said?
Yeah, it may or may not, I don't know. The ordinance, we kind of rushed at getting this thing put into the code because it looked like these things were going to be really popular and take off. Well, I think this is one of two, maybe three, that we have in the city.
Is that residential or just in the city limits? Because I feel like if we're to allow these in, within the city limits in a residence, home, or property, it seems like an industrial property would only seem okay.
So they are allowed in residential areas?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are, okay.
They've got to meet the criteria, at least as high as the roof of the adjoining buildings within 300 feet.
Okay.
So it pretty much rules it out in residential zones.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Justin, that if it's allowed in residential, why not allow it in industrial with, you know, if it meets the criteria?
Is it practical if we, if there was a grandfathered condition, is it practical to ask him to have a 15-foot chimney, or is that not practical on this particular structure?
I think on this one, he could probably accomplish that.
Is that, would that be a benefit? Would that get it?
Yeah.
That would be a benefit to him?
Yeah, definitely.
That would be reasonable for him to do.
I mean, I put mine up, and I mean, with guide wires and everything for support, it will, you know, it will stand easily.
So what's the wishes of the council? Scott?
Well, there's been, the subject of a variance has been suggested. It seems like if we were going to grandfather it in, it would have to be under some arrangement, and the arrangement seems like it would be a variance. Is there a way that we can have a variance application put forward and then approved for us to do something like require him to add so many feet to his chimney or something like that?
I don't know that a variance is the way to go. It's a, it's a land use thing. We could just put requirements on it, this particular.
You know, Your Honor, members, one thing we could do is, is require a conditional use permit for these types of uses in any zone, and then you apply those appropriate conditions to those permits. A variance doesn't apply here simply because the lot wouldn't meet the practical difficulties test, which is required under state statute to permit or provide a variance. So I think we would be taking the wrong step by going down that road. But we could amend the code to, to state that the use of a wood fire boiler in any zone would require a conditional use permit, which would allow additional review on a case-by-case basis from the Planning Commission City Council, and putting conditions on based on where they're located and in relation to the neighboring buildings and things to accomplish exactly what the ordinance intended to do.
I think that sounds like a reasonable.
I think that makes sense with.
So we still need to change the code, though, correct? So bring this to the council for the city attorney's advice to their guidance to put the conditional use permit in language, is that?
Yeah, and we'll have to talk to the city attorney, Your Honor, members, to see if it should fall under the zoning ordinance, or if it should, and remove this language from the other parts of the ordinance, or how he wants to have that in there related to the conditional use. But I think that's probably the most appropriate way to go, so you can really do that case-by-case judgment on these things, because this isn't a one-size-fits-all solution. There's some parts, you know, residential zones that don't have any neighbors within 300 feet, and there's others that have a neighbor five feet away, so.
Right.
Certainly. Okay, so we will, let's get a motion to ask the city attorney to draft whatever documents need to be to put a conditional use permit on.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, please, just a second. Thank you, Tom, for the discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both say and sign that motion, carries. Thank you, Guy. Item number three is a Prairie Wetlands memorandum of understanding. I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Prairie Wetlands Learning Center was established in Fergus Falls back in 1996 by action of the federal government and also subsequent actions of state and local governments. True partnership for many years. When it was founded back in 1996, an agreement was in place between the city and the, it's technically the Department of the Interior, but the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, for the sake of our discussion today. That agreement was later amended in 2008 and brought it to this council at the end of 2018, as that agreement was 10 years and expired at that time. The council at the end of the year, it could have been right at the beginning of the year, I don't remember, extended that to cover us through this year, 2019, to allow us an opportunity to look at the contract comprehensively and put a new, longer-term extension into place. So that's what's before you today. This agreement was drafted by the Department of the Interior. It doesn't materially change anything from the old agreements, the city's obligations remain the same. The reason that the city owns the land under the buildings out there is related to some state bonding dollars that were infused in the project several years ago, and so we have to keep ownership of the land. And as a result, the Prairie Wetlands is paying the city $8,500 annually to cover insurance premiums associated with that arrangement and the city owning the property. The proposed term of the agreement is five years, so it would go out to June 30th of 2024, and like I said, the obligations of the city are unchanged, the terms are, I think, very favorable. It goes as far as stating that the city should not incur any cost or liability as a result of the agreement, that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is operating the facility, and our involvement is related to owning the property under the buildings themselves, and they cover all of the costs, like I said, associated with, with insurance and things as a result of that. So the recommendation before you is to push this forward to city council to approve the memorandum of understanding, which would then expire June 30th of 2024, and at that point in time, we'd have to either extend it or look at redrafting it again. Few other things, there is a 60-day written notice termination clause within the agreement if either party wishes to end the agreement before its expiration. And then I would just mention, too, there's a new director out at the Prairie Wetlands as of the end of last year, and Neil Powers is his name. He's done a really great job thus far. He was very good to work with in drafting this agreement and coming up with these terms. And if you have not met him yet, I would suggest that you go out there and do so. He's a very dynamic professional and happy to have him here in Fergus Falls. He's commuting right now, but intends to make this home, so going to look forward to working with him for many years. And from the city's perspective, the partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the operation of the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center continues to be a success, and I think entering into another five-year agreement with them is definitely the right move, and is something that we should all be enjoyed about, because this is an offering that we have here in our community that no other community can say they have. So I'm very proud of this asset and glad to be part of this partnership.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions?
One minor question. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
I was going to move to put it on the consent agenda.
Yeah, so we got a motion to bring this to the council. We'll get a second, then we have discussion.
Well, a second, and that comment, I guess, it was, it's a big piece of land, and I was just curious how big a piece of land it is. How many acres is the, is that site? Do we have an estimate, just a rough idea?
Your Honor, council member, call me. I don't know. We don't own the entirety of the site. We own just the property underneath the buildings, or the main building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we own the, the main buildings, but like that barn that's off to the side, that's actually on U.S. Fish and Wildlife property, so we just own the main buildings and the footprint under them.
Oh, so we own the buildings as well as the land, in that, where the parking lot is and where that, where the activity center is? Oh, okay.
I'm going out there for Parents' Day this morning, so I will ask.
Any other questions?
I got one other, just kind of dumb question, probably, just education. So we own the buildings and the land because of the state bonding. Will that be for, is that for a stated period of years, or will that be for the eternity of the operation of the Prairie Wetlands?
We own them, and even if this agreement were to be done at some point, we would still own them, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I think that's pretty cheap insurance for what we're doing there. It hasn't, rates haven't changed in over 10 years?
Nope. So this covers insurance, and we actually put a little bit aside out of that each year, maybe $2,000, $3,000 a year for capital outlay things that typically U.S. Fish and Wildlife takes care of everything on the buildings, but if there were to something to come up, we set a little bit aside. Not much, but some.
Good. All right. Do you have a motion and a second to bring this memorandum of understanding to the council? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both say and sign that motion, carries. Item number four is a budget process update. I'll call on Finance Director Bill Sonmore. Morning, Bill.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor, council. So put a memo together in your package just explaining our 2020 budget process. The year goes by really quick, and we're right back here talking about budget again. But I did send out letters to our various department heads within the city so they could start preparing budget requests. That was done on May 15th. So between May 15th and then June 24th, we'll get those budget requests in to our office, into the finance office, and then I'll compile the budget so we get it ready for the Tax Levy Committee, which will start meeting the end of July, rolling in through August. And Justin Arneson is on the Tax Levy Committee, I believe, this year, composed of the mayor, the city administrator, and then council member Arneson. So we'll work on that. We'll set up some possible dates, looked at, in, starting on July 16th possibly through August 27th. We'll probably come to a committee of the whole then on August 28th to present to you a proposed budget. We would then come back a couple weeks later, middle of September, for your approval of that proposed budget. So the city council approves that proposed budget, and then you get to December, the first meeting in December, and we bring you the final budget, ask your approval at that time. We need to have a proposed budget and levy certified to Otter Tail County by the end of September, and then we, when you act on it in December, we get that to Otter Tail County by the end of December, then to have the final levy put on for 2020. And then we publish all that in the Daily Journal then in January as well. So that's kind of all I'll go through, but if you have questions or concerns, you know, certainly talk to your Tax Levy Committee, you can talk to myself as well, ideas you have. So we're going through the capital improvement planning process, too, so if you have thoughts about that, you know, get that into us as well, too, so.
Any questions for Bill on that process? Scott?
When you say get it into us, are you saying you specifically, or does it just go to cityhall.com?
You know, to me personally, probably is the easiest, drop a note to me, or send me an email, or to the mayor, Andrew, or Justin Arneson as well, too.
I have a feeling if you send it to cityhall.com, it's probably not.
I'm not going to go anywhere.
Look, you're probably right. But, you know, you can leave them at the front desk, too. If I'm not around, they'll get them to me, so.
Well, the, the reason for the question is a resident contacted me by email asking for something specific, and so I was wondering if I should have them come to you, or if I should present the request. In this case, it has to do with facilities at the soccer fields.
Okay.
So should they want, you know, should we as a city want to do something with some kind of facilities at the soccer fields and get it into the budget so we can do that? You know, it seems like it ought to either come to this committee first, or come to, that's what I was looking for, where's the door?
Yep. When it comes to me, then I would put it in the budget and then bring it, you know, in a budget request to bring it to the Tax Levy Committee. That committee will really, you know, digest that and kind of chew through that with all the other projects, and so.
The, I guess the bigger side of the question here is, it's an idea for something that doesn't have a dollar figure. So if I was able to come to you and say, yeah, we need, you know, $40,000 for this thing at the soccer field, that's great, but at this point, it's, we need this thing at the soccer field, we don't know how much it's going to cost, we don't know where any of the details would come from, that kind of a question, I don't know if you're the right person to bring it to.
Well, you can still bring it to us, and then we'll probably work with our engineering department, too, you know, come up with a rough ballpark figure on something like that.
I think Andrew wanted to have a comment on that as well.
I do, just, just maybe more for information than anything related to that specific item. Staff has been meeting with a member of the soccer association here for the last two or three months. We do have some design of prefab buildings and other buildings related to what the cost would be. We've met with them on a few occasions to understand the number of players in the association, their needs. They have one porta potty currently out there. We've just exchanged emails like this week, or as current as this week, talking about potentially having one of the trades programs in the local high schools build the building. I touched base with Jason, our building official, on that, and we're exploring those avenues. We do have some cost estimates related to that. So there is work being done. It sounds like there's an instance of multiple people in the soccer club maybe not communicating, that somebody's taken the lead on it and taken it a few steps further than, than what is going on now, but those conversations are actively taking place, and where we left it is they're going to give us an idea of what they potentially can fundraise, and then we're going to figure out what the remaining need is based on the estimates we have and try to work it into a budget, or try to find money to do that here in the next couple of years. So we've made it clear that it's probably not going to be this year based on the current budget, and it may not be next year, and they've been, our point of contact, who is on the board, has been accepting of that as long as there's something in the works and the conversations are taking place. So just wanted people to know that we're not just letting that fall, and that there is progress being made on that front, and it sounds like there's maybe a disconnect, because I had another council member ask me about it just before the meeting started today, so.
I think, if I may, the board is, is pretty well-unified. I think, I think individual parents are just reaching out to council members to express their support and ask us to, to help move the project along, so, because I've heard from some people, and I. I'm a soccer parent myself, so.
Soccer mom?
How dare you assume?
So, any other questions on the budget process?
It's early.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Next item on the agenda is rental registration ordinance. I'll call on city administrator Andrew Brumseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. As you recall, at the retreat back in February, this was the topic of discussion, and then we also had it on a committee of the whole agenda here in the last couple of months related to what we want to do with our rental registration ordinance. The dialogue that we had, it seemed like the desire of the council was to entertain a ordinance that would require inspection of all of the units. The way we have it today is we have two different programs, one being the standard license, one being the best practices. The best practices is one that people can voluntarily enroll in to have a better rate, but that requires an inspection. The other class or license does not require the inspection, and they're paying more to essentially avoid having their units inspected. So the, the ordinance has been drafted by city attorney Nick Lamo. This, today's, the purpose of today is just to introduce that to the public and to all of you, to say that we've heard what you guys have said, and this is what we have come back with. Several departments of the city staff have sat down and talked with city attorney Nick Lamo as this was being drafted, and has had their input into this. And this morning, I really wanted to just lay out the timeline that, that staff is proposing. This certainly can change in either direction. I would recommend that it probably doesn't get any shorter than this, but today, the 29th of May, we're introducing this. After this meeting, we're going to be sending out a letter to all of our registered landlords in town, providing a link to this proposed ordinance language, and also contact information for city council members and staff, should anybody have any questions, concerns, comments that they want to, to have addressed or shared at any time. We're proposing July 29th for a meeting, which would allow for more discussion and to address questions that people have that evening or leading up to that evening. I envision that on that 29th meeting, that the city attorney would be on presenting this and walking through the ordinance step by step so people have a true understanding of what actually is being contemplated with this new language. That gives people two months to really read, digest, reach out to council members, ask questions, review the language. I feel like that's probably a fair and adequate amount of time to allow people to participate or to begin formulating what those questions or comments are going to be on that July 29th meeting. As early as August 5th, the city council could act or consider the first reading of the ordinance. If that is approved, they could then consider the second reading on August 19th. If that would be approved at that date, the publication date would be August 22nd, the ordinance would then become effective September 6th. This timeline works well with our rental registration process. We currently, on October 1st, send out the rental registration renewals, and then on October 1st, send out the rental registration renewals, and then require landlords to have their paperwork and everything filled out by November 15th. So we would have adequate time to adopt this new resolution and put this new process into play for the next round of licensures and inspections, if the city council were to follow this timeline or decide that they in fact do want to move forward with making these changes. So I'll stop there. Just really wanted to allow the public the opportunity to know this is forthcoming. We are gonna be, like I said, sending letters to specific landlords that are registered with the city. This will be on the city's website, and people are encouraged to reach out to city council members or city staff with their thoughts, questions, comments, concerns, and we will do our best to answer those, and certainly take into consideration those comments as we continue to move down this process and contemplate whether or not to adopt an ordinance like this.
And then you mentioned July 29th as potentially a public meeting, and will that be sent out in the initial letter?
It will. We'll send that out, and we'll have the time. I don't recall. We have that, I think, figured out. It's just not on here.
It's a 5th Monday of July, so it's.
Likely a 5th.
It'll be in that notification.
Yeah, we'll make sure that that goes out with those letters to all the landlords. We certainly want this to be an inclusive and participatory process, that everybody has the opportunity to understand what's being approved or contemplated, and also have their input weighed into the decision-making.
Sure. Thank you. Justin?
I've got two questions. I know this is preliminary, but one of them is just, like you mentioned, the workload of all the time to do it. Of the current registered properties, what percentage opt out of it? So how much more workload will that be to, you know, if this were to go forward? What percentage of that, or how many inspections would be on top of what we're currently doing?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Council member Arnison, I don't know if Jason or Guy wanna take a stab at this, but I, my answer would be about 50/50, 60/40, but if you have better numbers.
We're pressing that 50%.
Okay. Then the second question would be, this doesn't pertain to rental registration. It's just, I mean, if it's your primary dwelling and you have somebody living with you for a short period of time, that's not considered rental property versus owning a complex or, you know, not residing there? There's a distinction, because I remember when the last time, you know, this came before us, there was a lot of residents that maybe rent out a bedroom or something that were really concerned. This isn't applying to them, correct?
Yes, Your Honor, council member Arnison, that distinction is made within the language of the ordinance, and all of those definitions are included. We'll highlight those in great detail on the 29th, but you're exactly right. If you're just renting out a room in your house, it would not fall under this. There's other parameters, such as people that are snowboarding and potentially renting out for a short period of time as well, that aren't covered. We do probably want to have a global discussion. It's maybe a topic for another day, but with the influx of, you know, short-term vacation rentals, Airbnb, VRBO-type things, do you all want to consider those rental units and have them inspected as well? Or is that something that we want to take on in a different way? Like I said, those are becoming more common, and, you know, it's, I think there's gonna be a bigger discussion about those statewide with the fact that they're kind of flying under the radar, and they're not necessarily paying that, the lodging or tourism tax that funds a lot of this community's convention of visitors bureau. So doesn't have to be today, but just something to be mindful of. If we're looking at the different definitions of rental housing, do you all want that to fall under that definition as well?
Thank you, Andrew. Any other questions for today? Thank you. We'll move along. Number six, it'll, I have a number six as a plat properties rezoning, and nine's not here, so Andrew, did you want to?
Yep, I can do that, Your Honor, members. Essentially, what we need to do this morning is, and I will say, we're acting as the city council this morning right now. We're not acting as the committee of the whole, so I do need official action on this item. In relation to rezoning, there's what's called the 60-day rule, and that essentially says the city council needs to take action within 60 days, or the proposed action or permit is automatically approved. And this instance, related to plat properties rezoning, they're, just the way the calendar fell, we brought it to the soonest planning commission meeting. We then did have five Mondays last month, which is now, the 60-day rule would expire between today and Monday's meeting. So if, I guess I could put it this way, if the city council wants that to automatically become approved, they don't have to act on this today, and the 60-day rule comes and goes, and the thing is automatically granted. If they wanted to deny it today, they certainly could, but we have done the first reading at the last council meeting, and the second reading would be at the council meeting on Monday. And if that's the desire, I would recommend that you have the second reading and then have the roll call to defeat it at that point in time, if that's your desire. But what the action that we're asking for today is simply to call for a 60-day extension for the rezoning application. This would then still allow for the second reading to be held next Monday at the city council meeting, but it wouldn't allow the thing to automatically become approved, in the event that there's neighbors or others that wish to express their concern or to speak to it. So the reason that we're asking for the 60-day extension, and you have to state this for the record, is because, one, the size of the application and staff turnover during the review process, we need additional time to review the application. We did have the city planner depart throughout that process, and also simply because of how the calendar falls in this instance with five Mondays, and it just didn't work out. If we had a regular four-mondated month, we would have had no problem. We'd be acting on it within that 60-day timeline. So this is maybe an anomaly, but really, the action of the council today, should they choose, is to grant a 60-day extension, and then it'll be on Monday's city council meeting to contemplate the second and final reading, if that's the way the council wishes to go.
Does the petitioner have to sign off on that as well?
Not in this instance, no. But the petitioner has been made aware of the fact that we're gonna be seeking the 60-day extension this morning, and did not object to that, knowing that it's likely gonna be on the council meeting on Monday.
Sure. So you have stated that, so does the resolution need to state that again? It's just, it's been stated, correct? So we need a resolution for that extension, so we can have this discussion at the council meeting.
I'll offer the resolution requesting a 60-day extension for the plat properties rezoning request.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions? Scott?
A comment and a possible motion, I suppose. I think that asking for an extension, in this case with the turnover and whatnot, is probably appropriate, and so that we can gain a little more time here. But frankly, I think 60 days is too long. I think 30 days ought to be plenty. And if it was possible to offer the motion to change this to a 30-day extension instead of 60, I'd like to do that.
Is there a second to the motion to change the 60? I believe the intention is to act on Monday night.
Which would be within 30 days.
Certainly so.
So I don't, you know, I think that we can get this wrapped up in 30 days. That still gives us at least two more readings to deal with anything that comes up, and there'd be plenty of time for review, it seems to me. I don't know why 60 days would really be required. There may be some advantage, but I don't really see going two months out when we can probably get this wrapped up in a couple of weeks. So I'd like to suggest that we do it in 30 days, and offer that as a motion or amendment to the resolution, whichever way applies in this case.
So I guess it'd be a motion amending the resolution to go from 60 days to 30 days? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll make the motion so we can vote on it, and then I have a question. I'll second it.
Okay, so there's this motion and a second to amend the resolution from 60 to 30. Go ahead, Justin.
You know, my understanding of your intent was that we're doing this just to delay it till Monday, and we're making a decision Monday as a council. Is there a reason why? Is there statute where it's a 60-day extension, or is that just the normal extension timeline? Because that's, being on the council, whenever we've had to extend something, it's been 60 days.
Yeah, Your Honor.
I don't know that there's a.
60-day rule by statute.
Yeah, Your Honor, members. I couldn't definitively answer whether or not that's statute-related, but when I did discuss this with the city attorney, he was indicating the need for 60-day extension. It is a 60-day rule, and generally, when you extend it, it's setting, starting the clock over, so to speak. And I'm not saying we couldn't do a 30-day. I just, I don't definitively know the legal answer on that, and I'd be hesitant to tell you to veer from that. I don't think, like council member Kwame said, I don't think it matters either way, because it's gonna be on Monday's agenda, and at that time, you know, the council certainly could table it and wait another meeting, but I can't see a scenario where you'd have multiple meetings where you couldn't make a decision up or down. I would be hesitant to recommend doing a 30-day extension, just because I'm not sure on the legal implications, if there are any. And when I discussed it with the city attorney, and the guidance he gave, all is related to a 60-day extension. So without him being here, I guess I have to stick with that advice, and.
Sure.
I don't have a better answer than that for you.
All right, everyone. So we'll vote on the motion to amend the resolution from 60 to 30 days? That's what we're gonna vote on first, okay? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign?
Aye.
That motion fails. So now we'll vote on the reso, any other questions on the resolution? The extension? Roll call, please.
Arnison?
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved, and will be on the agenda for Monday evening. Next item on the agenda is sidewalk and driveway rates for 2019, and we'll call on city engineer Brian Yuvar.
Thank you, Your Honor. The topic before you is in regards to the 2019 sidewalk and driveway program. Just to give you a little background in this, public sidewalk construction and repairs are assessed at a rate determined annually by the city council. The information is provided for you. This rate is approximately 50% of the actual construction cost plus engineering costs required for a typical five-foot wide by four-inch thick concrete sidewalk. Special note, the city requires a six-inch sidewalk section across driveways. This is assessed at 100% of the cost. So the city generally, I think it's approximately $30,000 levied annually for their share of this project. This is 100% petition. So in order to proceed with the 2019 product, we're requesting two things. We need to initiate public improvement 6071, and approve the rates as noted here in the packet. I just want to note here on a change based from 2018 to 2019, we're not recommending any changes to the rates from the previous year. So at this time, requesting initiation, public improvement 67, 6071, and approve the rates noted here.
Thank you, Brian. Is there someone that'd like to make a motion to bring that to the council?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Chris, are there any questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. We have two additional agenda items, and the first one is public improvement 5324.
Yes.
Which is a 2019 millon overlay improvement project.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. City staff, we substantially completed the project plans and specifications for the proposed streets for the 2019 millon overlay project. If you turn to your projector over there, we're trying to identify in area, once we complete the plans fully. But in First Avenue and Broadway, we're looking to do Linden Street and Summit Avenue, and then a smaller portion thereof. Like I mentioned, the project plans are, this is a resurfacing project, but the city's policy too, with these types of resurfacing projects, we're doing adjacent pedestrian ramp improvements and making those ADA compliant, taking those numbers in. We have a little bit of flexibility, but not too much. So with the presented before you, we're estimating the construction cost of $221,300. Because of this, we have to follow competitive bidding requirements, minimum a 10-day publication. We may try a little bit more, just to get better circulation. I haven't established a bid opening date, but we anticipate in later June. If we receive favorable prices, we're going to look to add to the contract as much as we can, as similar years before. When proceeded, we anticipate, just like in annually, this work will be completed late this fall. So the budgetary, in 2019, we budget $204,000 for this work. This budgetary amount also includes a construction, contingencies, and engineering. Therefore, I'm looking to supplement some of the additional costs and everything, and we'll have a final when it comes to award, but using general MSA funds to help supplement the total project costs. So at this time, I'm requesting accept the project plans and specifications for public improvement 5324, and authorization advertised for bids for public improvement 5324.
Thank you, Brian, and we can move this to the council by motion, if someone would like to offer that?
I live on some, so I'll make the motion.
All right.
I got a question quick.
Justin?
Sure. So this goes from First Avenue to Broadway, just on the other side of that intersection going down the hill, that, there's a really rough patch on Summit there going down that hill.
From first to second?
It would be heading to the east, on the east side of Broadway, down the hill.
Yeah, on the east side.
Is that?
We're going.
You're gonna be there, but I realize, you know, I can do so much, and we have others.
Yeah, you're right. We're gonna be there, and I'm gonna try to have a direct change order with the contractor to mobilize and see what you can do for those adjacent areas, similar to what we do in other areas in town too. But yes, there are some really bad areas there.
Just that next block.
We simply can't mill them overlays. You're absolutely right. We have to patch those.
Right.
So, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? If not, all in favor of the motion to bring this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Last item is public improvement 5325, which is a seal coat improvement project.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous carpet, this is, we substantially completed the project plans and specifications for the 2019 seal coat improvement project. Please refer to the map. We have a variety of areas that we're looking to have seal-coated this year. And also looking at, if you can't really quite see, but also incorporating the police department too as well, but not clearly shown on the map, but that will be more refined. With the work presented before you, we're estimating a construction cost of $104,600. With this monetary amount, we can just do direct quotes. Once again, I haven't scheduled this, but we plan to anticipate and send these quote packets out here in the coming weeks. If we see favorable bid prices, once again, we'll look to add to the base contract. Just like the mill and overlay, we budget annually levy $108,000 for this type of work. Any, there, this also once includes staff time. So we're looking to use general MSA funds to help supplement some of the remaining total project costs if needed. So at this time, I'm requesting accept the project plans and specifications for 5325, and then authorization to advertise for quotes for public improvement 5325 as well.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer that motion?
I'll offer.
Krista?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, Brian.
Your Honor, I have a quick question for Brian, unrelated, and I, forgive me, I was sick for the last council meeting, so maybe you guys already talked about it, but is there a plan for Union Avenue between, is it Bancroft and Elkhart over here that's bad?
We're planning to patch it.
There's gonna be some patching.
Blacktop concrete.
Yeah. I've just had a few people ask me about that.
Yeah, we have a small area in Elkhart there too, just south of there, but generally, yeah, that's a heavily used area. That is another one of our bad areas as well, so we'll be looking, yeah, we're gonna have to do some patch right now, but as far as the plan and everything, there's nothing on the radar right now for this year on that.
Yeah.
Perhaps next year, as I got a few other projects I'm looking to circulate, maybe smaller ones. That is on our state aid route, so we might be able to supplement that. However, I want to note with our state aid, we're doing a lot of allocations for projects going out to 2022 as well. But that is an area that we're looking.
Okay. And when you, when you patch it, do you just patch it with blacktop?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yep, just curious. Thank you.
I'll just add to that. With the number of patches that we've got to do this year, with the winter that we had, it just, our streets just blew up. We're looking at renting a paving machine, so that we can get those patches done more efficiently and without too much, or added stress to the bodies of the staff.
Sure.
Shoveling tons of asphalt.
Yeah, that's a good call. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So there's announcement about the Lake Region Run. Caroline, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, we have the Lake Region Run on Saturday, the Saturday, June 1st, and there's gonna be a couple of road closures that we just want to make sure everyone's aware of. Freiburg Avenue will be closed from Summit Avenue all the way up to Fur Avenue from 6:30 in the morning till about 10:30 in the morning. So if you're traveling in that area, I'd suggest using Union or going back behind the school. Also, Lake Alice isn't technically closed, but there's gonna be about 500 runners going around that lake, so that's not the best route either. Just, we have over nine states represented, and almost, as of yesterday, about 850 people. So, big, big weekend in town with lots of visitors, so let's be nice to our volunteers and our racers, and just add a little bit more time to your schedule if you're gonna try to get around that area. Yes.
Have you been able to secure enough volunteers?
Yes, we are pretty, we're pretty solid on that. We do, every once in a while, we do need a couple backups, just in case life gets in the way of some of the volunteers that are out there, but I think we're looking pretty good. But come on down, check it out. It's pretty fun.
Thanks, Caroline. Thanks for all the work that goes into that. Events are great events.
They got a pretty talented lead biker for the half marathon this year too.
They fly him in, fly him in for Europe.
All right. Anything else to come before the committee? Scott?
Yes, Ben. I emailed you earlier, but I guess I'd like to again mention, or at least bring up, the subject of the FERC licensing for the Otter Tail Power Hydros. That up till now, the city hasn't been involved in the conversation, and I think that with three of the hydros right within the city limits, that we need to be in on this conversation, and there needs to be some, there needs. and there needs to be some, there needs to be some comments made and put from the city into this. It's a 40-year license. If we don't ask and get involved in the conversation now, we're not going to get another chance for a long time. And there are questions regarding fish passage, but even more significantly, with our work to develop the downtown riverfront and the riverwalk and the trail system on the dairy property, it seems like we ought to be talking about access and things like recreational passage around these dams and whatnot, and we need to be in this conversation. And we've got about a month to get it done. So, looking for a way to get that done.
Certainly. So we had the discussion two weeks ago, I think it was, at the committee of the whole. I guess it'll be up to the city council whether or not they want to have official comments submitted. So, I would suggest that, I believe it was the end of, end of June, is that correct, if I remember?
One of the comments in early part of June, so that the report can be compiled and then received or submitted by end of June, as I recall.
So I guess it would either be Monday night, we have that discussion of whether or not the council, or is two weeks from now, give us adequate time. I guess we should have that discussion on Monday night, so we should put that on the agenda for Monday night, and then the council at that time can just decide whether or not they want to take action and have to submit official comments. Does that make sense? All right. With that, anything else to come before the committee? We're adjourned.